At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect that Quorum is present. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Harold Elmore to appeal his invocation, and then we'll have the pleasure of it.
That is great. Our gracious heaven, Father, thank you for the day, our Father. Thank you for all the men of blessing you allow us to enjoy each day, Lord. We have to ask you this morning, we assembled here, our Father, to discuss the county business, our Father, that the things we do and say will be pleasing to you, our Father. And we have to ask you, our Father, forgive us where we fail, you're our Father, and our shortcomings. Just thank you for this building we have, and the heat we have, and the comfort for sure, Lord, and we just thank you for the commissions, our Father. And we have to ask you to be with them, be with the leaders of our country, our Father, and the ones overseas, fight for our freedom, be with their families, Lord. Be with our leaders. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Rejoice, man, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman, may I say so?
Yes, sir.
Roll tide.
Roll tide.
Well, or equal.
We ain't got on a war about yet.
We brought it back, thank God.
At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone here. Appreciate the news media being here to cover the discussion of the people's business here in Covenant County. At this time, would entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda.
I will make that move.
Sackett.
I have a motion to Sackett to adopt the official agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we will hear from our public officials, uh, the Honorable Ben Bowden. Do you have anything you would wish to say at this time?
No, sir, thank you.
Dennis, uh, sure. Mr. Meeks, do you care to say anything? Then I'm gonna call on Mr. Chuck Patterson. I'd asked him to come and give us a report on how we are doing on our collection of our FALO taxes.
Thank you. Could be here this morning. We were projected to collect eleven million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixteen cents. As of yesterday, we had collected ten million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. We have the remaining of about seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to collect.
How much, sir?
Seven hundred and fifty-four thousand left to collect. And we are charging late fees and interest on this, and I understand from the past that it's the same group that waits every time to pay them, so nobody's really concerned.
But eventually, they do pay.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Is that about, is that about in line from what it's been being?
Well, last year, I heard it was one point one million at this point that we hadn't collected, so that is better.
A little improvement. Well, that's good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's got all elected officials. At this time, I'm calling Mr. Buster Boyd. He had asked to address the commission. If he'd come to them, just to remind you, you've got three minutes.
Take you that long to get here, Mr. Buster?
It's getting longer and longer. Hey, Chairman Godwin and commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for calling me, Ms. Allen. Uh, being so enthusiastic about denouncing that I'd be here for three minutes. Mr. Godwin, Mr. Godwin, you were splendid at the debate yesterday, uh, Saturday, and your opponent did good too. Didn't I make both of y'all look good?
Well, we not here to discuss.
No, no, but it's very important. These things are important, or I wouldn't bring them up. By the way, on taxes, they're still after me for Texas taxes, but y'all give me safe haven over here, won't you? And, uh, Mr. Godwin, I've only asked for one thing from you, one that gum thing of all I do for you. I just wanted to be put in charge of the Beaver Brigade. You remember that?
Yes, sir, I'm afraid I do. I tried to suppress it.
And, uh, but I wa- I wanted to tell you the opportunity for more of you, Commissioner, I got some reports. And this is important for government, that you have transparency, and one of the ways you have transparency through these debates. And through the exchanges, not just somebody five minutes up there and talk. You exchange. And there, uh, in the story in the paper, and I'm so grateful for Ms. Michelle for doing that, there were many other issues developed in that, and it's very important. I got a call, irate citizen for supporting one of the other commissioner in another race. I said, I'm not doing that. Why are you discriminating? Well, look, Mr. Blocker was there. Y'all take those debates up, and I'll help you put them on. Think, but you know who two of them who weren't there, and who, who don't have the courage, you and Mr. White, the two candidates running for circuit judge? Oh, my goodness, can you believe Judge Bowden and his opponent, Courtney Bryant, are so scared of me, they can't believe, oh, Lord? And, uh, they need to have a debate. You know what you need here? Need a good tea party here. Tea parties, I've been with tea parties. I'm a, I'm called a tea party Democrat, but I really believe in the tea parties. If you had one there, they'd put those judges to the fire. They'd make them show the courage to show up for a debate. And, uh, we were gonna have one next, uh, near, this Saturday at one o'clock, but I, I thank Mr. Blocker for being there. And, uh, there will be one in somewhere, you announced it too, in, in Op, I believe sometime. Okay, well, do I have thirty seconds left, Mr. Godwin?
You still got thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Well, let me see what else I can. Maybe I ought to just take one. No, I, I'm all, well, I, I tell you what, that, I'll just, I'll just give you some time back.
I appreciate that.
That ought to delight everybody, huh? Okay, well.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the, we have an item of old business, and that is the fiscal year sixteen holiday schedule. You have those proposed schedules in your packet. So, admitted for comments or a motion to adopt them, change them, whatever.
I'll make the motion to adopt the schedule, Chairman, holidays.
I have a motion, I have a Sackett.
I see.
I have a motion to Sackett to adopt the two proposed, uh, holiday schedule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Uh, let me, uh, ask for unanimous consent to take up the, uh, status of the jail addition, because that was a thing of old business in the minutes. We was supposed to have a, uh, resolution by the twentieth if we did not, so I'm gonna ask, is it, does I have unanimous consent to bring that up at this time?
Yes.
I spoke to the architect regarding this a couple of times, and we're still waiting on a couple of parts. Um, we decided that he would, I forget the terminology he used, but he's gonna allow us to finish the few little things that were lacked to be finished. And I'm waiting on a part from Cornerstone and an exit light from the electricians. Um, and that's all we're really waiting on, but me and my guys have completed the work that was lacked to be done. Small things, moving mirrors, repainting doors that were labeled wrong, and things like that. We've completed all those, and we're waiting on a couple of parts. I've seen some correspondence between Patrick and Glenn, uh, via emails. He's asked a lot of questions, and there hasn't been a lot of response, except that we're waiting on those two items. Um, that's what's holding it up. That's the only thing that's holding it up. I could actually make it work, uh, in a matter of a day, but I just don't wanna go get a tacky exit light or one that doesn't match and stick it up there. But it's, that's how close we are. One exit light and one door latch.
The thing about it is, then, if we do that work, and with the contractor later on, if there's a problem, he'll say, hey, I didn't have nothing to do with that, so we'd need to get in writing.
Patrick, Patrick said he took care of that. He, he was going to list the thing, the items that we were gonna do, and he was gonna exclude those from the contract. He was gonna take money and reimburse us the money for the job that we did. Um, I did all that with his approval. He, he said that was a way that we could go ahead and get this thing done. Was for us to just do it instead of waiting on, basically, to get back down here to move some mirrors and touch up some paint and all that stuff. Uh, the thermostat boxes we installed, um, so, several, a checklist of little things, five or six little things, that we couldn't get them to come back and complete. And Patrick told me that, um, you know, if we did that, he would reimburse the county, and we agreed on an amount and all that stuff about what it would take for us to do it. And so that's, that's where we're at, and all we lack is waiting on an exit light and waiting on a door latch, um, and then the final inspection.
What kind of timeframe for these parts, anybody tell us?
I can't get anybody to tell me that. That's, they actually sent a door strike, and it was the wrong one. So I went over there and took a picture of it, emailed the guy at Cornerstone and Patrick and all that, and he's supposed to be sending the right one. Took three days for the wrong one to come in, and it's been about a week and a half since I told him it was the wrong one, so I don't understand why the delay.
This is the, uh, thing I'm concerned about, is that we have documentation that the architect allowed us to do certain things, so that during this year, that we have, uh, to, uh, call on the contractor to fix things, to make sure that he, that we're in compliance or, or whatever you want to call it. That he said, well, I didn't do that, y'all did that. You know, Mr. Harold, you've been through this before.
Yes, sir.
Because we got like, he, we holding forty thousand dollars from the contractor until this year is up, to make sure that everything is according to the contract. And if we make changes, we just need Patrick to give us that doc-
We've already received that.
Documentation as to what, and you need to document, I think, that what you did to put with it.
Most of it's cosmetic. I mean, it's, it's really-
I understand that, but you never, you never know.
Well, maybe we'll get it going.
How far are we behind on this thing?
It should have been finished in February, January, February.
Last year?
Yeah, we had about ten months.
Why are we still holding it?
Well, it's the way the contractor, um-
Oh, we didn't put a deadline on it?
We didn't put a deadline in the contract. If, that's a mistake on our part by not having-
I wasn't involved in that. Put that up there.
The con, the, uh, architect suggested we not do that, because it would run the cost up, and we all agreed not to put it in there. And so, when we approved that contract, it, it is what it is, and we're gonna try to, try to finish this thing up.
We been drug up a dry river bed on this thing, yeah. Great.
It's been a lot of problems. And I, I do know this, a lot of subcontractors said they would never work for that contractor.
A lot of commissioners never vote for the-
It start, it start out the problem to start with.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad we got nothing coming up.
Let's done, let's do something else.
Let's, uh, move on to new business. We don't have to take any action on that. Uh, first thing is consider approval of the Bennett from December the ninth, uh, two thousand fifteen regular meeting. The December the sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, uh, special meeting, and December the twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand fifteen special meetings. You have, you had received a copy of all the Bennetts. Uh, I personally have read them. I, I say no, uh-
I make a motion we approve them, 'cause all it's not what we do.
Second.
We have a motion, Sackett, to approve all three sets of minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. We, uh, need to approve our accounts payable, payable and payroll totals for December two thousand and fifteen. Ms. Allen, is there anything you would like to comment on before we take action?
No, sir.
And I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable and, uh, payroll.
Make a motion we approve.
I have a Sackett.
Sir.
Mr. Barton, Sackett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we are, uh, considering an appointment to the Covenant County Water Authority. Mr. Ralph Rutherford resigned because, uh, due to some illnesses, and, and, um, this appointment will be to finish his term. Is that not correct, Ms. Allen?
That is correct.
And we have, uh-
We had one applicant.
We have one applicant, Mr. Joe Bush, uh, who has, uh, expressed an interest in it. And so, what is the pleasure of the-
I have a question for Chairman. Who, who, how many years he had left on his board appointment?
I think it's three, I, I think.
I'll look that, uh, David, I'll look at that.
Either he's halfway or less.
That's just the way their bylaws, uh, read. It's for the un, uh, unexpired term.
About two thousand twenty-one. March of twenty, twenty-one.
He's got roughly four years.
Four years.
Mm-hmm.
They, they serve, there's three members that serve six-year terms to that.
Six-year terms.
I make a motion we appoint him.
I'll second.
We have a motion that, uh, we appoint Mr. Bush to the County Water Authority, and we have a Sackett, Mr. Elmore. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, the motion carried unanimously. Okay, we have a budget amendments that we need, and the person we're gonna take up is Drug Task Force. I'm gonna let Ms. Allen cover that.
Yes, sir, we were recently granted, uh, the grant for the Drug Task Force, and as part of that, we would need to adopt a budget that fit in with the amount of that fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh, so that's what I presented to y'all today. And that's just a reduced amount. We had to turn in the first initial cost, uh, of operating, and so I've got basically the necessities of operating that actual office. And it also allows for a clerk, part-time clerk.
Which is not a county employee.
That's right. It would be an employee of the task force, but we would do, uh, the payment, it will be paid through our payroll. But it would not be, uh, the position will be contingent upon this grant.
Would y'all be willing to let Ms. Allen take the grant, and for what items in there, to place it in the appropriate line item in that budget?
Yes.
Definitely.
Seen nothing wrong with that.
Okay, I need a motion that effect.
I make a motion to let Ms. Secretary handle the grant.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, uh, motion carried unanimously. The next item is, uh, the Sheriff's Department, uh, don't know exactly. A lot of items up in the air. Got a lot of issues concerning the spenders tiers of money, and who we're going to find that money to do that. Uh, Ms. Allen, do you have any?
Uh, basically, what's come up recently was the Sheriff's Department's request for a new Tahoe. Uh, once the bid was released from the state, it was a lot higher than what we anticipated, and so we're trying to work out something to, uh, be able to cover the cost of that Tahoe. That, uh, believe the sheriff, you said it would, should be somewhere around thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand, correct?
Thirty, thirty-four and some change.
And then- Okay, and so-
It's like a nine thousand difference from what we booked it, right?
Well, I think there was discrepancy in the budget on the amount of Tahoe's cost to start with.
Right, that's right.
That, that's-
We were about four thousand or so off on that. And the sheriff, I think you had agreed with Ms. Allen that, uh, uh, maybe we were gonna move a line item for the equipment over to the purchase. Is that something y'all had discussed? And then, uh, we transferred the money over out of that line item to the purchase price of the vehicle.
That's right.
And then you were gonna, uh, equip it yourself. I think that's a good compromise on our part, and his too.
I think so too.
I make a motion that we do the necessary budget transfers.
We approve the, uh, budget amendment to increase purchase of the vehicle in that line item and decrease the exact amount in the, uh, equipment.
That's right. That would be considered for the add-on equipment that was budgeted for that purchase.
Add-on equipment's an entirely different line item.
I'd like to say something, Chairman. Next, next year, when we set the budget up to buy the vehicles, we need to sort of have in line what they gonna cost. We don't have to go through this right now.
This was unaffected.
That was one we had no real control of in the state bid process.
It's a state bid, and until it comes in, we don't know.
You don't have, we do-
We know it ain't gonna be twenty-five. We know that.
We do know it would be.
We can sort of raise it up a little bit and go from there. We'll have this kind of discussion.
You know, we actually passed our budget before the state did theirs this year, and that's put us kinda in a, in a situation.
If you're gonna buy a brand-new vehicle for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Allen, did we vote on that?
We did not.
No, we didn't.
Okay, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion ca-
I had the motion moved by Mr. Barton, who was the second.
He will.
Just pick some less.
Brother Terrence- Mr. Elmore spoke up, so.
I'd be fine.
Uh, you willing to put your name on the paper?
Yes, sir. Go there right now.
That's good.
If y'all are, I will. If y'all are, I'll stand with y'all.
Always have.
Yep.
Okay, uh. While we're talking about the Sheriff's Department, we need to talk about the digital radios. We, um, did the paperwork, and right now, total cost is being credited to the Sheriff's Department, but we will make adjustments. Uh, you would do that with a journal interest for whatever the cost is for EMA and whatever the cost is for CAP. So it, that, that was the, uh, simplest way to get things done before that time ran out for us to get the discounts. And so, uh, we did that and executed that, um, we would say a loan, is that correct, Ms. Allen, from S and P to pay for them?
It's, yes, sir.
Okay. Anyway, uh, Mr. Meeks, do you know for sure that Floella has approved that, that they're going to purchase their own digital?
That's what I heard too.
And the office gonna do the same thing.
Yes, sir.
So that's great that we all have the whole county under the same communication system, and it would enhance our law enforcement. Okay, the next item is designate de- depositories for county funds, Ms.-
Um, explain what you just said about expenditures to EMA and, because it's, but we didn't do it. Y'all covered it though, right? It's not supposed to be in my budget already, because it's not my budget.
It's gonna be, it's gonna have to be from your department for it to be recognized as being your equipment for your department.
Right, but y'all put money there to cover it though, because it's not money there now to cover it.
They were, that's right. They were aware that there was no money, and they agreed to purchase it, but it has to be atomized to each department to be having the asset listed in your department.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wanna make sure y'all know that there's no money there to cover the purchase of those records.
Right. Uh, Ms. Allen, depositors for county funds.
Yes, sir, this is annually a requirement. Um, basically, um, the commission office uses, uh, Cadence Bank. But we need to allow for the other, uh, banks in town to be allowed to be used by any other department in the county. Uh, and it's just one of these annually requirements that we need to have y'all to vote approving these banks to be used.
All these banks can be?
Yeah, the motion needs to be that we approve any financial institution in Covenant County to be an approved depositor for funds.
Right, and they must, uh, be a safe bank in order to be used, and I believe all of these are.
Of what kind of bank?
Safe bank. It's- Securities of Alabama Funds Enforcement Act has to be.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I see that. I just hadn't read that. All right, I understand. I make a motion we use this list of, uh, banks, you know, to, for depositors.
Second.
So we have a motion and a Sackett to approve the seven entities listed on, uh, enclosure thirteen to be depositors for county funds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Now we're to consider a retail beer and wine license application for the big T grocery. Mr. North, is that in?
Yes, that's my dude.
Okay, would you address that, please?
Yes, uh, I know, uh, always been the tea grocery. Uh, they just changed a little bit. Same family has reopened this store, and, uh, they always owned it. Uh, and they're good people. I have no problem with them, uh, getting this, and I think they'll be real good for business.
Mr. Terrence, you have a question?
I was, I was gonna ask words of that. What's going for?
There were tea grocery out on eighty, coming out between Op, coming out of Op, right there at the bottom of the road.
Lot or not?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay.
Old Tilsta Road.
I had a total blank.
So I make a motion to grant this.
I second.
Bottom like.
The motion needs to be that we recommend to the ABC Board that they issue this license. We do not issue, we do not approve.
No, we don't issue.
Or is that, just be sure that we on the right page for this, Al.
Yeah, they know that. I, I sat down and talked with them, and, and I told them we just had, this is the next step. They had, they done their backgrounds and all that, and then this is just the next step. They know they got to go further with it.
I have a motion that we recommend the ABC Board, uh, grant this license, and a Sackett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. And you will send a letter to ABC Board as a resumption.
Yes, sir.
The next one is consider appropriation to the Human Resource Development Corporation. This is the people that came before us asking for funding to help with feeding children in home daycare. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
And we had asked them to send us their budget for la- last year and their sources of revenue, and their budget had came up, I think, about twelve thousand short of what they had spent over revenues. Uh, I think this is one of the things. We do things for, uh, adults with, uh, adult activity centers. We do some things with the, uh, children in the advocacy center and, uh, and the adults and children with that. This is sort of just to complete that picture, uh, that if, if we could see fit to, um, uh, appropriate some monies to them, that I think it would be a great help to them, and it'd be a, a good thing for, for the county to be involved in it, so.
How much they're short right now? You said twelve thousand?
About twelve thousand, but I'm not advocating that, Mr.
I understood that. I understand that. I'm not either, Chairman.
But, uh, I think maybe we could give three or four thousand, maybe.
Well, this beyond the contingency fund.
If we, do, do we have that much in the contingent fund at this time?
Yes, sir.
I mean, to what we, I mean, we just getting started.
That's right.
The reason I'm saying that, we will on way then.
Right.
And we don't wanna do a whole lot, go, do you know what our budget, what we, our balance is of now?
Uh, I did not bring that with me this morning, but, um-
We hadn't done a lot.
Right. It starts out at ten thousand. It's what that fund starts with, and we're only, this is the fourth month in, and, uh,
I know we don't-
We have a lot of other, uh, mileage that comes out of that for these different organizations and It's one of those that always comes tied at the end of the year, of course.
If other commissioners agree, I don't mind making a motion to give them three thousand dollars if that's all of y'all's consent too. Don't leave them three thousand dollars.
We have a motion that we appropriate three thousand dollars to this. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, and so, just let me say this. In relation to Child Advocacy Center, we do seventy-five hundred there, is that correct?
That's right.
And we do seventy, did we do seventy-five hundred for Bethesda House?
Yes.
And then the adult activity center.
A lot of it.
Y'all have been approved those different approvals.
Right.
So it's just sort of helps complete the picture so that all children are helped. So we have that motion, a Sackett. All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Uh, Ms. Allen, when you notify them, would you please ask them that if this is going to be an annual occurrence, that we need to know this request before we do budget?
Most certainly.
At this time, I'll take comments from the staff. Any of the staff have any comments they'd like to make at this time?
Right here.
I gave a little update on the flood. Uh, currently, we have, uh, well, after lunch, we'll have seven roads still closed. Uh, for some of these, it's gonna take a while. Uh, and this Monday, we had the Federal Highway Administration come down and look at their major collector routes. And we had, uh, we have six sites that qualify, and their estimate was about just a tad over two hundred thousand for those six sites. And these are roads like your major roads. Uh, FEMA came down last week to do their PDA, preliminary disaster, uh, disaster assessment. And everything was good with them, and I don't know if Susan may know any, you know any status on statewide, if they're ready to, you know, have her-
They're still doing assessments. They probably, they're trying to finish them by the end of next week, the state.
Okay.
They've already sent the information out, though I didn't know that the state has, to show us the things.
So then, when they get all that together for the state, they make a request for a declaration from, from federal.
Right.
So it's gonna take a while.
So, but we're, we're keep, you know, we're still working on the roads, we documented with pictures before and after, so. We're not waiting on to do work.
I was in a meeting with Richard Collier yesterday, and he had just mentioned that was trying to get some things qualified for EWP and, and the other, do, what is your estimate?
We've sent stuff in already, uh, EWP, but, uh, before the storm. And hadn't heard anything. But, and there are some places, you know, like you got a, a gully on the ditch, FEMA doesn't really, if it's not already there, you can mitigate to get rip, like rip wrap, but the EWP, they don't have a problem getting rip wraps.
You might tell the folks what EWP stands for.
It's Emergency Watershed Protection, it's through the NRCS, it's a federal program. And it, I mean, it can put any roadway, of course, you, you can't tie FEMA money with it, you gotta totally be separate. If you have a FEMA site, you really can't have EWP. There's some like gullies on side, uh, dirt roads, they're good for that. You know, they actually mitigate by putting rip wraps, so you don't have the problem again. FEMA does mitigation, but it's a little bit, it's not as, uh, great as the EWP program.
And a sample of EWP is when we did the Book Creek watershed up there with all those gullies up there.
Right.
And was able to do that, so.
So there will be a few that we would wanna use EWP, I know two or three, which we've already turned in before. I gotta see how that's gonna work. That's, that's about it. Just hope it don't rain much anymore.
Now, we want rain sometime.
Well, half an inch there.
Yeah.
We just want it in measured amounts that we can handle, right?
Not more than a rain gauge can handle.
But, uh, at this time, uh, so, any other staff wish to make any comments at this time? Uh, we'll have to take com- I'll take comments from the, uh, commission members at this time.
Well, I'd, I do, I, I wanna go back again, and we said this, and I'm gonna say it again. Uh, our road department and sheriff's department, everybody that was out during all this time, we've, I think we, we didn't have any real issues with anyone getting hurt, you know, as far as the public, I think it went pretty good there. They was out doing a lot of barricades at night, all different weekends, holidays, all this, and-
Yep, that goes a long way, we thank y'all, thank all the departments, you know, EMAs and everybody that's done this. And, uh, the coordination that has went on, and, uh, the other agencies throughout the state has bragged on our departments, and I think that's one reason they was first here to do their evaluations, was cause our coordination was, was good, and I just thank all y'all.
I'd like to say something, Chairman, I had a lot of calls about roads out and roads, like, commend the public out there, live on the roads. They've been mighty courteous in, uh, working with us, and I appreciate that. They, I haven't had a call, anybody upset, just know they like to get the roads worked, and I told them to get to it soon as possible. Some is gonna be done more quicker than others, but, uh, we, they will take care of it, and they be mighty considerate.
I thought the priority was on school bus route.
Right, and next thing I'd like to say, road tide. I'm through, Chairman.
Well, I appreciate everybody's efforts also, and, uh, I appreciate the public, cause, uh, usually after a big rain or something, we have a lot of roads that are torn up and stuff, and I think we've eliminated a lot of those problems with the help of the commission and the road department and the sheriff's office, so we hadn't, hadn't heard any complaints on that, and that's always good.
If there are no other comments, uh, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I shall move, Chairman.
Does Ms. Stacy have anything?
Uh, uh, attorney, she told me she didn't have anything. I was afraid I didn't say that, but we do appreciate her being here. We do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor, stand.